And I will be calling the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Scapus to order. First, roll call.
Sarah Jones Graham.
Monica Allers.
Marty Markey.
Scott Jensen.
Bill Blake.
Arlo Vernwald.
Rita Bernhard.
All right, everybody's here. Next up is approval of minutes from the February 8th meeting. Does anybody have any comments or corrections on that? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the minute, accept the minutes as provided. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right. Next up is citizen input. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on any issue that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we have no citizen input. Now we're on to new business. Docket SDR 2-23. Scapus Planning Commission has scheduled a limited land use decision to consider an application for site development review. SDR 2-23, submitted by Leah Chitwood. The request is to allow for the change of use from an existing single-family home to a real estate office, as well as improvements to various site amenities. The site is located at 33454 Southwest JP Road, southeast of the Southwest JP Road and Southwest First Street intersection on property described as Columbia County Assessor Map 3212CA3200. This is going to be a limited land use decision. There is no verbal testimony. And I will go to my official script. I'm calling this public hearing to order to consider an application for site development review. The procedure for this hearing will follow a strict format. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Limited land use decisions do not take verbal public testimony because they do not require interpretation or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. Any written comments shall be included on the record. Only the staff, the applicant, and the planning commission will have an opportunity to speak. Does any planning commission member wish to declare any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest regarding this matter? Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? The order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, then a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by the commission. The decision of a planning commission can be appealed to the city council. Take it away.
Good evening commissioners, thank you all for being here tonight and taking the time to review the material. I'll be, I'll begin by going over the subject site information and observations of the staff report, which begin on page seven of your packets if you want to follow along. I'll then list the relevant approval criteria for the proposed development and let you know which pages correspond with the findings of each chapter of the Scapus Municipal and Development Codes. Lastly, I will let you know staff's recommendation and recommended conditions of approval. After that, we will pause in case there are any questions for staff before getting into the applicant's presentation. So, beginning with subject, subject site on page seven. The subject site consists of an approximately 9,318 square foot parcel of land that is currently occupied by an existing single-family home. According to the comprehensive plan, the house on the site known as the Casey Street House is identified as a structure of secondary historic significance. Subject site has four existing trees and a row of bushes on both the eastern and southern edges of the site. The applicant is currently using the residence in part as a type one home occupation, which is a business and a residential structure for the applicant's real estate business on file as HO9-23. Scapus Development Codes prohibits customers of a type one home occupation from visiting the business location for business-related purposes. North of the subject site is the southwest, is Southwest JP West Road and to the north of that is a commercial building shared by a home remodeling specialist and a plant store. East of the subject site is a gas station and an associated convenience store. South of the subject site is a vacant lot that is also owned by the applicant but is not part of the proposed development. West of the subject site is Southwest First Street and west of that is a church and a single-family home. Subject site and all surrounding properties are zone general commercial or C and are designated as commercial on the comprehensive plan map. The subject site and all surrounding properties are in the downtown overlay and so the standards of chapter 17.80 are applied to this proposal. Subject site is not located within the special flood hazard area or commonly referred to as the hundred-year flood plain. There are also no wetlands, steep slopes, or watercourses near the site. Requested approval. The request is to allow for a change of use of, from an existing single-family home to a real estate office, as well as improvements to various site amenities. Scapus Development Code specifies that an applicant may request approval of a modification to existing development by providing a copy of the proposed modified site development plan and providing a written rationale for the change, for the changes. If certain triggers are hit, however, the applicant must apply for site development review application and the planning commission must approve the modification. In this case, the trigger that requires planning commission to approve this proposal are a change that requires additional onsite parking in accordance with chapter 17.106. This change of use is requiring five additional parking spots, so that is triggered. The second is a change in the use as defined by the Uniform Building Code. In this case, it's from B business to, or excuse me, from R residential to B business. Number three, a change in the type and location of accessways and parking areas where off-site traffic would be affected. In this case, the creation of the new lot changes that entirely. And then lastly, a change in land use. It is changing in land use from single-family detached to a real estate office. These changes constitute a major modification where the planning commission becomes the approval authority. Section 17.106.030C12 requires financial, insurance, or real estate offices to provide one parking space per 400 square feet or fraction thereof of gross floor area. With a gross floor area of 1,876 square feet, five parking spaces would be required. The subject site has frontage on JP West Road and Southwest, Southwest First Street, making this proposal eligible for a parking reduction of up to 100% due to its location within the downtown overlay. The applicant is just requesting a reduction of one required parking space and propose, proposing to provide four spaces, one of them being ADA accessible and having the adjacent access aisle, and none of them are compact spaces. Staff recommends granting the applicant's request for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed real estate office will have only three regular full-time employees in the office. Number two, the improvements to Southwest First Street include on-street parking. For those that utilize the on-street parking, they'll have immediate access to the continuous pedestrian walkway system that was proposed throughout the site. And number three, given the size of the lot, the location of the existing building, the requirement of accessible parking to have that eight-foot access aisle, and visual clearance requirements for parking spaces is the most that the applicant can feasibly provide. Existing house on the site is identified by the Scapus Comprehensive Plan as a structure of secondary historic significance. Exterior altercations to the structure require a historic structure alteration permit. However, these approvals for exterior renovations have already been granted in 2014. Since no new structures or alterations to the existing structure are proposed, no further historic permitting subject to chapter 17.82 will be required. If this application for site development review is approved, home occupation 923 would become void at the time of final occupancy since the conditions of a type one home occupation permit could not continue to be satisfied and the structure would no longer be classified as residential. Right-of-way public improvements. Property has frontage on Southwest JP West Road and Southwest First Street. JP West Road is classified by the 2016 Transportation System Plan, or TSP, as a neighborhood route, which requires 60 feet of right-of-way comprised of 36 feet of travelway, two five-and-a-half-foot planer strips, two six-foot sidewalks, and two six-inch utility areas. The applicant is proposing to perform frontage improvements along their JP West frontage, including a five-foot sidewalk, street trees, a six-inch utility area, and a new commercial driveway. Section of Southwest JP West Road that fronts the subject site has various widths with portion of the street being above and below the minimum width. In lieu of providing a dedication, the applicant is requesting to submit and record a non-remunstance agreement, which is allowed by the Scapus Development Code if certain provisions are met. We worked with the applicant to do this because there, there's going to be intersection projects on that First Street and JP West Road intersection in our TSP and once those are completed, we'll be able to adopt appropriate standards. Southwest First Street is classified by the TSP as a mixed-use collector route, which requires 54 feet of right-of-way width comprised of 22 feet of travelway, two seven-foot parking areas with pedestrian bulb-outs, two eight-and-a-half-foot sidewalks with tree wells, and two six-inch utility areas. Southwest First Street currently has a right-of-way width of 50 feet. To bring the street from centerline east up to standard, a two-foot dedication will be required as part of this development. The applicant is proposing to provide that dedication, a seven-foot parking area, and a six-foot sidewalk with decorative streetlights, as well as street trees and the six-inch utility area. Vehicular access and off-street parking. Once developed, the site would have vehicular access from Southwest JP West Road. One vehicular parking space is required for every 400 square feet or fraction thereof of gross floor area. Based on the 1,876 square feet of floor area, the applicant must provide five parking spaces. Again, the downtown overlay allows for a reduction of up to 100% if in certain areas of town, an applicant is in this eligible area. They're proposing to provide four parking spaces, none of them being compact and one of them being an accessible space. And then the applicant is also proposing to provide the two required bicycle parking spaces for commercial uses. Traffic generation. The applicant submitted a traffic memorandum, which is on file as exhibit five. This provides an estimated AM peak hour, PM peak hour, and daily total trips for both the existing, which is single-family, and proposed small office uses. The single-family home currently just generates an estimated 15 daily trips and the proposed real estate office is estimated to generate 27 daily trips, including five AM peak hour and six PM peak hour trips, which would result in a net increase of just 12 trips. Due to the low volume of expected daily weekday trips, no new transportation facilities or mitigation measures will be required. For landscaping, screening, and street trees. The applicant submitted a planting plan, which is on file as exhibit 4G, which depicts the provision of tree shrubs, grass, and ground cover throughout the subject site. The proposed commercial use would be abutting a residential use to the west if not for Southwest First Street. When this is the case, buffering but not screening is typically required. However, the, the subject site is in the downtown overlay and chapter 1780, which governs the downtown overlay, specifies that these sections of the landscaping, screening, and buffering chapter are not meant to apply in the downtown overlay. Therefore, buffering will not be required along the western edge of the property as it would if it were not in the downtown overlay. Section 1780100C requires one street tree to be provided per 35 feet of street frontage. The applicant will be required to plant three new street trees on each of their street frontages for a total of six street trees, provided that no conflicts exist. There are a couple trees already on the site and the home is existing, so we'll work with the applicant to plant as many street trees as possible, but recognizing there are conflicts. Then the applicant is provo, proposing to provide a variety of internal lot landscaping, including trees, shrubs, grass, and ground cover. For lighting, the applicant stated in their narrative that adequate lighting will be provided on the street's parking lot in Southwest First Street to meet city standards. A final site lighting and photometric plan will be required, be required to be submitted for review at the time construction documents are submitted. Public and private agency noticing, the Scapus interim city manager, interim public safety director, public works director, Columbia County Building Official, Scapus Rural Fire Protection District, and Columbia River PUD have been provided an opportunity to review and comment on the proposal. The Columbia River PUD provided a referral comment, which is on file as exhibit seven, stating that any decorative street lighting that's required by our downtown overlay code will be provided by the applicant. This requirement is included in the conditions of approval. Scapus Public Works Director provided a referral comment as exhibit eight, stating that the Public Works Department has no objection to the application's approval, provided it meets all criteria set forth in the municipal code, Scapus Public Works Design Standards, and Building and Plumbing Codes. Columbia County Building Official provided a referral comment, exhibit nine, stating that this project would need to meet all building codes, including ADA codes for this use. This requirement is included in the conditions. And the Scapus Rural Fire Protection District provided a referral comment, exhibit 10, issuing the following requirements. One, that commercial property shall have address numbers at a minimum of eight inches tall by one and a half inches wide. This includes buildings that are on roads that serve a speed limit 29 miles an hour and below. Numbers shall be contrasting in color. Address numbers shall be on the JP West and Southwest First Street sides due to it being on a corner. Two, address numbers on commercial buildings shall be fixed to the building facing the street at a height that is not obstructed by vehicles, delivery trucks, or other obstructions such as trees or bushes. Address numbers shall not be affixed to glass doors or windows. Three, adhere to any applicable code requirements for change of use from residential to business occupancy per the Oregon Fire Code. These requirements by the fire department are included in the recommended conditions. Notice of the application and hearing was mailed to property owners within 200 feet of the subject site on February 29th and published in the March 1st edition of the Columbia County Spotlight. As of the deadline to comment yesterday at 5:00 PM, there have been no comments made by the public. Moving now into the findings of fact. Staff's findings related to Scapus Municipal Code, Chapter 12.10. Visual clearance areas can be found on pages 11 through 14 of the packet. Chapter 17.01 Introduction or Right-of-Ways, Dedication, and Improvements, pages 14, 15. Chapter 17.62 General Commercial, pages 15 through 16. Chapter 17.80 Downtown Overlay, pages 16 through 26. Chapter 17.104 Street Trees, pages 26 through 28. Chapter 17.106 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, pages 28 through 40. Chapter 17.120 Site Development Review, pages 40 through 46. Chapter 17.154 Street and Utility Improvement Standards, pages 46 through 59. And Chapter 17.164 Procedures for Limited Land Use Decision Making, pages 59 through 61. Based on the findings of fact and materials submitted by the applicant, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve Site Development Review 2-23, subject to the conditions of approval listed on pages 61 through 65. For this application, staff is recommending 28 conditions of approval with the mix of standard conditions that we recommend for all site development review applications and then just a few related to this site and development specifically. That concludes staff's present, presentation and our recommendation. At this time, I can take any questions you'd like to ask staff before the applicant's presentation.
Just have one clarification having to do with the right-of-way on the JP West frontage. You said, uh, there, you said they're going to be deferring dedication of the land. Are they, but they're still going to do the improvements, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now it'll be a five-foot sidewalk, which match, matches existing of the Chevron site. And then also other frontage improvements, lighting if required.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right, I believe the applicant's presentation is next. There's two chairs, you can both come up.
Be honest, I don't think I really have much to add.
Let me ask you to really speak right into the mic.
Put it right here, is that better?
Yes.
So I don't really have much to add based upon what the staff report has provided, but I'm happy to answer any questions and John is the engineer that helped put everything together, so he's here as well.
My name is John D. Young with Tech Engineering and.
Same thing, can I get you to really speak into the mic?
My name is John D. Young with Tech Engineering.
Thank you.
And again, NJ did a very thorough job presenting this, so I don't really have anything to add, but just here to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much for coming up and telling us your names.
You're very welcome.
All right. I'm assuming no staff response?
No, those are indeed their names.
Thank you for confirming that. All right, we are going to close the hearing now for considering, consideration of the matter by the commission. So, now you get to debate amongst ourselves. Who wants to start?
Well, let me start. Some 20-odd years ago, we had a downtown overlay established. So a lot of these things are based on the overlay and what we can, cannot do with that property. Right now, there's been changes to it and I look at it, I would say nothing's going to change if we don't approve it. There's nothing in, I can see, which hasn't been acceptable or be approved based on what the staff has looked at. Architectural standards, they're all in place, things are looking the same. And I guess, you're looking at anything else, it's just, that whole area is going to be developed at some point in time. So this just, it's what it was designed for, that's what the overlay was designed for. But what they're doing is exactly what a few years ago we decided to do with that. That's my input anyway.
Does anybody else?
Hey, Thurl.
Yeah? I can pretty much echo Phil. There's not a whole lot more to say about this one, it's, it's pretty straightforward by the code. And seeing no other conversation, I would entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
Oh. So I can do that.
This side of the table's gonna.
Okay.
Step it up next time.
This is Bill Blake here, I'll make an, at, motion that we approve a request for approval of the application for site development review to allow for the changes of use from an existing single home to a real estate office, as well as improvements to various site amenities. And that is a location at 33454 Southwest JP West Road, southwest of Southwest JP Road and Southwest First Street intersection. And the property that we're talking about is, in the Columbia County assay or map, it's number 3212CA03200.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All right, I'm gonna say there's none. I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We look forward to seeing the changes, thank you. Next. You don't have to stay for the riveting, more minutes. All right, uh, calendar check. Well, we, we have a planning commission meeting, 7 o'clock on the 14th, that's this meeting. Council work session at 6 on Monday, the 18th, followed by city council at 7. Thursday, the 21st, Economic Development Committee at noon and Parks and Rec Committee at 6. And then, the 28th of March, we have another planning commission meeting at 7.
We, we don't actually have one scheduled that night, that's just kind of a placeholder.
Okay, so we're canceling that, all right. No planning commission meeting on the 28th. And we move into April, April 1st, there's a council work session at 6, followed by city council meeting at 7. Saturday, the 6th, is the annual town meeting at 9:00 AM, that's the high school auditorium, right? For anybody watching, it's a really good event, you should go. It's a great way to get some input into what the city is going to do for the next year and years. Then Tuesday, the 9th of April, 50-year-plan Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting at 6, followed by, um, the 11th, Planning Commission at 7, is that one?
It's possible, we have, um, yeah, no, I'll go over it in our staff comments, but it's possible, we'll let you know.
All right, moving on, April 15th, council work session at 6, followed by council meeting at 7. Thursday, the 18th, Economic Development Committee at noon, Parks and Rec Committee at 6. And then moving to Thursday, the 25th of April, we have a planning commission meeting at 7.
That is possible.
Okay. Well, uh, any commissioner comments?
I have one comment. I noticed in this last packet references to the Uniform Building Code. Is that, I know at least for the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, that's not what it's based on anymore. So I just thought probably that language just was just from so long ago.
It is. I appreciate you pointing that out because we're doing a bunch of code revision.
Yeah, I figured we should probably. I figured that one would be in there. Yeah. It's on the IBC, which is the International Building Code.
Yeah. Any other comments? I'll do the good job staff, rah rah, keep going. And yes, I actually mean that, that is not sarcasm. But no, thank you, you make our jobs really easy.
Yeah, this one was a pretty, ready to go.
I know it.
A lot of work on you, on your part though.
I have some updates on that too.
All right, I'm glad to hear it and, um, it's your turn.
Great, well, I'll be doing just a few, uh, planning department updates for you. I wanted to just draw your attention back to the calendar briefly. So Monday night, uh, the 18th, so upcoming Monday night at 6:00 PM, there is a work session, joint work session with the planning commission and city council from 6 to 7. I think Liz may have, um, perfect, so you got packets for that meeting and we'll be reviewing quite a bit of proposed development code amendments in support of the 50-year plan. The, let's see, there's I think just one more joint work session after that on development code. The work sessions after this next one in, that would be the April 15th meeting. That's the other joint, uh, work session coming up that's going to also be on code language. I think there's some comp plan language too we're bringing back. Anyhow, uh, let's see, let me go over my other updates. So we have some active land use applications, so we're reviewing the second submittal. So we have some active land use applications, so we're reviewing the second submittal for that three restaurant complex that we've mentioned before. So it looks like the second submittal is going to be deemed incomplete, they have a little bit more work to do. And then Keys Road, we have the city's facility, a three million gallon water reservoir that the city would be constructing on the existing Keys site. And that will be deemed complete here, we expect it to be deemed complete pretty soon, and so that will be the next application that you'll be reviewing. We wanted to get it on the April eleventh meeting date, but that might be a little tight, so it could be the eleventh or the twenty-fifth for that one. Let's see, we've had a number of, we've had an inquiry meeting recently since our last meeting with you, it was for a proposed self-storage facility on the Cinnamon Tree property. Sounds like they're proposing to keep the existing building there and then use the rest of the property for self-storage facility. And then we had a pre-app recently for Wana Credit Union, and so that would be located south of Bymart on southeast second street. Sounds like they'll be taking our comments and moving forward to put their site plan together there. And then we also held a, or will be holding a three-lot partition pre-app for a three-lot partition located on JP West, so that's coming up March twenty-eighth, so a three-lot partition.
It's right by the creek.
No, not that one, so we did hold that one already and they are moving forward. Actually, we have the land use application for that partition. This one is, can you describe it, Chris?
What the program?
No, this is Cassie. So it's west of the park, kind of as it starts heading uphill, south of JP West.
Oh, it's.
There's an.
Real lane.
Yeah, it's right.
South of JP West, really overgrown, there's a house there.
They've been clearing it out.
Yes.
I didn't even know there was a house there.
Right. This is starting, as you're starting to go up the hill?
Yeah.
You're already going up the hill, it's like halfway up the hill, it's right where the S curve is there.
Yeah.
Or above Jovan Lane.
Okay, and then, yeah, that's all I've got, so let's see, we already went over the joint work sessions coming up, we're still looking at the UGV study areas, we're getting a little bit closer on those and the analysis for that, and then, I don't know, within a month or two, we'll have a decent idea of, you know, the areas that are easiest to serve, that make a good sense to bring into the UGV because it kind of is logical and, you know, is adjacent to our existing UGV. So we're still finishing up those studies, but I think that comes back in a joint work session around May. So making progress, yeah, hope you guys can all make it to the annual town meeting, it's always a good event. This year, the mayor will be doing a, just kind of a state of the city address, I think we'll have a few words from the recruitment team who's going out for recruiting our city manager, and so they'll have a few things to say, maybe get some community feedback. And any other topics, NJ?
I mean, the only other thing is that a lot of other, other agency partners that we work with might have tables, so, you know, the watershed council has a table a lot of years, and so it's a good chance to just meet and mingle with those leaders one-on-one.
Well, we'll have, the city will have a table too for, and we'll have our fifty-year plan consultants there just for if anyone wants to chat or.
Are they gonna break down in small groups like they've had some?
No, so we don't have like an actual activity at this one, yeah.
I have a quick question, Lori.
Sure.
In the general area, which we just had earlier, there's a home that's being remodeled right now, an old historic home. Is that going to be for residential purposes right now and will eventually come back to us for the same kind of thing?
I'm not, which, I'm not aware of it.
So it's, it's by that other realty place?
Yeah, it's just kitty corner from the other one.
I guess I'll need to go check it out.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of remodeling of it right now.
Oh, it's on first.
White House, that's an older one.
Okay.
It's historic, they've been in front of us before.
Okay.
Right now, they could come to you for what they're doing because they wouldn't need us.
Yeah, I mean.
It'll be the same.
If they're changing their use or something like that, obviously it would need to come to you, oh, I did want to, thank you, I'll check it out, but as of right now, they haven't come to us.
Okay.
You can do general repairs and maintenance to a home in the downtown overlay and it doesn't need to go through our office, but we'll, we'll take a look. But what I was gonna say in regards to the application tonight and, you know, it being pretty straightforward, they're pretty much putting in a parking lot and things, as part of the changes related to the fifty-year plan, we're trying to look at how can we streamline some processes and make it a little easier for the development community to get projects done. And so for instance, under, under the new proposal for site development review, this particular application would not have come to the planning commission. So it would be staff level approval, it would still be, you know, the neighbors would still be noticed, but it would be staff level approval because really there isn't anything discretionary about it, there's nothing controversial, there's no, you know, variances, there's no sensitive lands or anything, and so that will speed up the process and just make development a little bit easier on smaller projects. Sure.
Two and a half hours.
Reason I'm asking is that JR Gedlick, they're having. I'm sorry, there, JR Gedlick, there's a funeral service for him on, at eleven o'clock that morning, so.
I think that should work, yeah.
Leave, that's my understanding anyway, must have changed, but.
Okay.
Anyway, that might draw some folks to the area because they're longtime residents.
Yes.
The city.
Yeah, and so I, thanks for sharing that, I, I would assume that would work just fine because we don't have any kind of breakout activities or anything, so people would be free to, once the mayor's done and our consultant's done talking, you know, about the recruitment process, we'll just release everyone back out into the main area and they can just, you know, leave whenever they want, so.
Rita, that's on the same day you said?
Same day, yes.
I saw something posted on the reader board going down and so far I haven't been able to find out any more information, so appreciate that.
St. Lenz's.
You don't know him, he was the husband to a city councillor one time here, one time city councillor and a city recorder.
And then, Chris, did you have a brief summary?
Yeah, just a brief update, because things haven't changed a lot in my world since the last time we met. I'll just give you a quick update, Moore Road is under construction now, the one road that's north of the airport, so if you can avoid that area, it'd be best to just kind of stay away from that, it'll look beautiful in about six months, so.
Don't go down there for six months.
Yeah, just give it, give it some time, it's gonna be a little dusty and a little busy with construction traffic over there. Then the food cart pods, you know, it's, everybody kind of sees that going by it on the highway, it's going, I think they're a little bit ahead of schedule, it's going really well. So they will be pouring concrete over there tomorrow, a bit of it, so again, just stay away from that area if you can, there'll be, you know, cement mixers and things and a lot of crews over there on that little short street, so. And then just generally, we have a lot of the engineering team, which is me and Reed, we have a lot of plan review going on and we're, we're helping for the private sector and then we're just doing a lot of plan review and project development on the public side and we've got various public projects, Lori mentioned a few of them, so we're staying pretty busy with that, so. That's all I've got, any questions?
I don't think we'll be seeing anything, I noticed in the paper, for St. Helens is trying to seek a solar company and they were thinking of splitting some of it between us and St. Helens, but it looks like it's all going to St. Helens now.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, there's, there's kind of two components to that, there was a manufacturing piece and then there was an assembly piece and they're, they would be in two separate, they're kind of two separate functions, or at least that's how they, how they do it, and so the assembly component, I think that was gonna happen here and they've decided to not do that, so I think they'll do the manufacturing piece in St. Helens and then I'm not sure how they're gonna manage the rest of it, but that's my understanding.
They bring in, like they say, a thousand jobs or whatever, there'll be more people moving in for homes.
Yeah, it's a good.
And then just one, because I'm very excited, sounds like they've filled, they've filled all the slots for the eleven food carts at the food cart pod, so we should have some new options soon, yeah.
I had one question, Lori, the new process, like I'm all for pushing as much as we can to you guys, what happens if there's comments about something, especially comments against something?
So it would basically be handled similar to how it is now in that staff would respond back to, or really what we do is we work with the applicant, right, it's the applicant's responsibility to prove that their application is, they have the burden of proof. And so we would work with the applicant to make sure that they're responding back to comments and then like we do, we would add a staff comment as well and deal with it that way, but really, as you know, unless there's a violation of some criteria, you know, we still have an obligation to approve it, they might not like it, but, so we would handle it in the same manner, it just wouldn't be in a, in a public hearing.
And then if I'm not mistaken too, it would come to planning commission if it were appealed, right?
It would, yeah, yeah, so a staff decision.
The final.
Staff, well, staff decision is always appealable to planning commission.
But you only get, at the city level, there's only one appeal process?
I do believe it could still get then appealed to city council.
That wasn't my, my understanding of it, it was that you could, you only got one appeal within the city process.
I don't know if that's, and I'll look into that, I'm not sure if that's the case.
I'm not sure either.
It seems to me that you could always go to the next highest level within the city and obviously after that it would.
It seemed to me if you kicked it up to us, then normal situation would be, we did something and they didn't feel that was comfortable, they could appeal to the city.
Usually recommend.
Yeah, in the case that, yeah, in the case that they are the final approval authority, yeah. And honestly, like I looked back a few years and, and it really, the number that would stay at a staff level approval was not a high number, but, you know, application types vary over the years and it just so happened that those couple of years I looked at, there would have been maybe one or two that would have kept, you know, stayed at the staff level, so it's a step in the right direction and maybe we, you know, see how that goes and see if there's a way to keep, you know, we're just basically trying to make it easier for, for the development community, especially for smaller projects like this.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, I would recommend leaving an option for staff to kick up to us.
Yep.
At your discretion.
Yes, yeah.
That, that exists in the proposed language right now, yeah.
All right, that's all I had. Anybody else have anything else for staff? All right, it's seven forty-four and you're all released.
Thank you, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Have fun, do it again.
So Bill, were you just signing something?